Oh, I love it. I love the writing and I love, I just, and I never thought I could manage, truthfully, when Debbie said, "Oh, you're doing this," and I'm like at any turn, I'm gonna read and read, and I'm like, "Give me books, give me books, give me books," so I wouldn't understand what to do with it. I thought, "Oh my God, all these labels, what do they think I'm gonna do?" I have books in my room from A to Z, and I thought, but once I started really reading and understanding, it's not near as bad as what I thought it was gonna be.
Now, a lot of doing the Lucy Coffin screen and writing, teachers have to go to prepare for.
The beginning of the year, I was working about two hours a night. I'm not now, because I gotta feel for the way it works, but at the beginning, probably for the first month of school, I told Debbie, "I'm doing two or three hours a night, reading and preparing, but next year will be a lot easier," and I think like for Kim, that's fourth grade, she had those kids in third grade, she sees even more growth with them.
But now, Kim also had the reading training.
Yes, she had the training.
And had a little bit of the writing training, and so did, uh, Chrissy Rapp.
Yeah, so four of the fifth, third teachers have had some training.
This is Jackie's first year actually teaching language arts. For quite a few years-
About six years.
She was doing math, and this year our name was for her to move to language arts, and she did.
Language arts schools are about all about that.
I know a little book she has one to make, there are amazing books.
Oh yeah, they're making, they're writing wrong books, they have one, they get, they have read, they wrote their realistic fiction books, 'cause that's what we were reading, so the writing program was right on with the reading, which has been great with non-fiction, and they brought the book, we gave it to them, we have a little celebration, and they said, "Okay, now, where is it gonna be sold? Will it be sold in what bookstore is it?" "Oh dear, man." So don't think we're to that point yet, but maybe someday.
Okay, going on, going on, do y'all have any more questions?
No.
Going on, we're also doing, like I said, project-based learning, the student-focused groups, using our data, we do the DIBELS assessment for kindergarten through third, SRI is Scholastic Reading Inventory, which is what Jackie was talking about, that they had just taken this week, and SMI is Scholastic Math Inventory, and those are programs for third through eighth. And then we did a summer retreat this summer, we went to Lake Springs for a week, and it was wonderful. We had a lady come in and did a day's training on the Lucy Coffins writing, Cheryl Workman came, our instructional coach, and she basically did most of the staff development for us with that. We did a book study at that time, we just, it was just, we made plans for what we wanted to do this fall, and where we wanted to be, and, and just laying out everything that we needed to do, and what we needed more training in, it was just a wonderful, wonderful retreat for us this year.
And it was like eight to four every day.
Eight to four every day, yes.
Jerry Workman came.
Who, Jerry Workman came? Yes, Cheryl's husband, Jerry came.
Worked with PE teachers.
Worked with PE teachers, and he does a lot in the state with PE. And we pay for that through Title I funding, and I think I've already told you that we are doing different groupings for middle school levels this year, where they, instead of them being block scheduled, they are split up into eight different blocks, and agreeing with what the kids are telling me, they like that way better, they said they get less bored. Am I right, girls?
They like the block schedule.
You like the block schedule?
She's one of those kids that's very focused.
Yes.
Those kids are a little, could climb the walls, crazy.
They like the changing.
And the other reason we did it was because they were taught different strategies with different people.
Different people.
Where they might get it from one and then focus it to the other.
We have one language arts person who is focusing on the literature and the reading aspect, and then the other language arts person is focusing on the writing and the English, and then our student leadership groups. And if we can do all of that and do it well, we're going to see a rise in our scores. Now for our needs. We feel that we need an instructional coach for more than just one day a week. We feel that the benefits that the instructional coach brings to our school, if she could be here more often, which we don't have the money to pay her to be here more often, but if she could be here just two days a week, I think it would make a major impact. One day a week is, is wonderful, but you know, when you're here one day a week, you cannot go into every one of our classrooms and actually work with teachers, so she has to split her time. One week she will be in these classrooms, the next week she will be in these classrooms, and so it may be three weeks before you see her again, when she's working with you, but whereas if, if that instructional coach could be here two days a week...
How did we say the instructional coach, the title?
Title I.
Title I.
We contracted with Mrs. Workman this year.
What she did, her schedule, we got that better.
She's in different schools in the county, and I, I think that, I'm not sure which school's contracted her, but it's-
It's not like that, is it? That day or John.
No, no, it's not. But so she's, she's actually retired. She used to be principal at Edway, and she retired, but she has contracted with the county for so many days a year. And I mean, I'd love to have her full-time, because she is just absolutely that good. And then, we need a TIS at this school, in this building, all the time. A TIS is a technology person.
Yes.
We have had technology issues all year, and the county only has two, that I'm aware of, and they have to go from school to school. So if they're having issues at one school, then they can't be here solving any of our issues, and with technology being the way it is today, if we don't start putting TISs in every school, we're gonna be way, way behind, because these kids have to have access to this technology on a daily basis. When you go in the computer lab, and you're supposed to be doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, does what they call Carnegie, and it's a computer-based program, and they are supposed to spend forty percent of their instructional time on the computers. Carnegie doesn't work all the time. Then you have a RE180 program where they have to go, and, and every day they're on the computers, so RE180 doesn't load that day. Or Spanish even. I mean, it's gotten to the point, technology-wise, where I think that every school in this county is going to have to have pretty much a full-time TIS in their building in order to keep up with the technology. The two, two guys that we have in the county do a great job, but they're just two guys, and they can't do it all. They can't keep up with it, they, they sometimes get totally and completely overwhelmed with all of the work that has to go into it. Teacher's laptop goes down, well, they can't do anything on the, the smart board then. You know, it's just, and, and, and that's the way technology is. It may work today great, tomorrow it may crash and burn.
The day the electric went off over Hamlin, something happened to our computers here.
They completely crashed, and they didn't realize at Hamlin that, that our computers had crashed, so it was a few days before they got up here and do anything with it. And for some odd reason, it changed the date, the crash time, I don't know why.
Just they were blocking-
It, it, it changed the date, 2000 Atlantic. Well, because that date changed, nobody did anything on the, on the computers. And, and, and our two tech guys, they, they still don't have a clue as to why the date changed on it, but it took them about two days to get us back up and running. So, I mean, it's just so important for us that, that we have a TIS in our building. We need more bleachers at our football field. What, we have mobile bleachers to where we can move them for softball, and as you know, we use softball based on football, all use the same field, but we, we need another set of bleachers. We need another custodian in this building. We have three. According to what Dana Smith told me, if you have seventy-five thousand square feet of space, that puts you at the level of having four custodians. We have seventy-two thousand square feet of space, and our custodians just can't keep up with it, because the school is just too big.
How do you issue a custodian, spagnum times?
Oh, yes. One comes in for, at six o'clock, and works till two, one comes in at ten, and works till six, and then one comes in at two, and works till ten o'clock. And were it not for Mrs. Lucas helping us out occasionally, sending us a couple of sub-custodians to do some extra things around the school, I don't know what we'd do. And we need more storage space. There is no storage space at all built into this school. If Lincoln County ever builds another school, I'd like to say it on the design of that school, because they don't design it with kids in mind or teachers in mind, and, and it's just unreal that, that you build a school this size and we have, actually, two little storage rooms. We have one back there in the back cafeteria, and we have one in the office area. And now, the county did purchase for us a storage building last year, but that doesn't hold very much at all, and it's just, it really is an issue with us, because things get cluttered, because there's no place to put them, and, and you need that storage. Now, what I want, want to talk about a minute, for a minute here, is our standards. Our standards are changing, but they have changed as of this year. This year, we are being asked to, to teach according to next-generation standards, which are totally different than the standards we used last year. However, our testing has not caught up with the changes in standards. So this year, we will take the West Test on standards that we're not really even teaching either. So, you know, I don't know how that's going to stack up with the state. Not only that, we are having to take everything online, there we go back to the technology piece, and pray to God it's not like the Obamacare, and everything crashes when we get ready to take the West Test this year, because if it does, we're in a world of hurt, there will be no West Test. But I, but I just want you to be aware that you're talking, we've been teaching with apples before, and this year we've moved to oranges, but we're still testing with apples. So, so that's presenting-
Issues on-
Issues all across the board for us. Now, we are in the process of transitioning into a new test that will probably do a field test on it next year, that will be comparable to our next-generation standards, and these new standards are much more rigorous than the old ones, and that's one of the reasons why we've got to increase the rigor of ours. And I just ask that you all be patient with us as we make this transition, and that's our presentation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Get it back to our side.
Thank you, Brenda. It worked well, didn't it? I'll have to thank my little tech.
Mr. Curris.
Yeah, we do appreciate Debbie, everything you told us, and I, we, of course, note various things. We know that some of the needs are common that you all have for school, for other schools, something you need, and we try to look in line and address it what we can, and certainly consider the things you told us. It'll be interesting to see how your scores come out this first year, realizing that, like you say, things have changed so much as while we are testing, while we're teaching, but obviously, you're all moving in the right direction with some of the activities you have here.
I think we-
Hopefully, they'll show up and come with that fateful day, but we do appreciate all you do. Any members of board have anything else? If not, then we'll get to our next item, our agenda, which is our administrative section. For this, I'll need a motion to begin this. Mr. Curry?
Second.
Miss me a second.
Item A, the following adopt students to run the school by students and students. Item B, a contract with RIS2 for thirteen Lincoln County teachers to participate and make it happen on November the nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, according to the terms of the contract, and that's paid for through Title II funds. Of course, here's another one that will be December the nineteenth, and that will be for instructors and all of them, but I realize the nineteenth is already a per, but we do assume to go on track. Item C, an agreement with Jennifer Throbit to provide transportation services for West Hamlin Elementary students in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year, according to the terms of the agreement. Item D, adoption of the resolution and support for the salary of PAA to be presented to the two thousand fourteen legislative session sponsored by WEA. Item E, agreements with the following hand-supervised reas for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year in accordance with the provisions of West Hamlin Credit Act, January, January, January. Item F, outstate travel for the following employees, Danny Daly to Atlanta, Georgia, June twenty-seventh through July the first, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the National Community Conference, that's paid through the NAMF, Tim Elliott to Visser, Pennsylvania, who is between nineteen thirty, two thousand thirteen, to attend on the Maxx Robotics Competition along with Lincoln County High School students, that's paid for through the NAFH funds, including to Jackson Horological Stadium on the second, April, two thousand thirteen, to Shattle Road, JR IT Systems, to the regular competition, there were no plans for that particular person. Item G, LCHS, students to Silver Point against investing at Ohio on May the twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, transported by private carriage, and it's paid for in the county levy funds. Item H, out-of-county student transfer for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. Questions?
Anyone have any questions or comments with the administrative section? If not, then I'll call for question. All in favor of the administrative vice?
Yes.
May I put it on here, somebody on that. Okay, let's move to the finance section. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Kowstrick?
Second.
Go for some seconds.
Mr. McKenna?
Mr. McGee?
Schedule, out of all you pay, the schedule of invoices totaled one day in five hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, forty-three cents, received attachment. Invoices are filled, and filled at the due at the county office. Also included is I believe preliminary compensation for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year, which is included in your package when you do it. Go ahead. I know Mrs. Danny, was she playing on in here?
She didn't get back today. Okay, her, her, she was on a trip, and her plane was delayed, and I should have been back yesterday, so it was canceled, I think, flight schedule, so I can have it scanned up again. She couldn't get out.
It was a flyback, the second move, and she didn't come to the office that I'm aware of, and soon said she's on air.
At some point, I guess, Berg is gonna go with these with us, and draw to discuss this, which is, I mean, just from what I know, looking at the position we were all within, and as that happens, I'm sure you all can explain that to us. And I was a chair because, is how they really wanna place this, as far as this penalty that we may be subject to, is that hidden in here somewhere?
No, we have not received, we're expecting in the next couple of weeks, sometime prior to Christmas, the information from the State Department regarding that penalty and how much it will be.
Because I would, you know, I, I guess it's, it's new, and I wonder who knows how they're gonna do that, and if they're gonna have that as a separate step in the formula, or how they'll incorporate it or something, but so far, we haven't-
Right. We haven't received any information.
Okay, anybody have anything else on finances? Okay, then I'll call for question. All in favor of this?
Yes.
Yeah, here's, come back, oh, it's being all yes, but also. We'll go to personnel. Do you have a motion, please?
Okay.
Mr. Curry?
Okay.
Just a second.
Okay. Okay, Section A is the employment of short or early-term substitute professional personnel. Section B is the employment of substitute service personnel. Section C, employment of extracurricular personnel. Section D is the resignation, section E is resignation and or retirement, and that's noted under the effect of that residential retirement. Section F, I am asking for you to table that because after we sent this, we were in discussion with the State Department, and there appears additional training that the three people will need to complete before.
Do you have any questions or comments about personnel? Okay, if not, then I'll call for questions for Items A, B, C, D, and E, and we'll table Item F. All in favor of that?
Yes.
Those opposed, it'd be an all yes, but. Okay, we'll go to Tommy's concerns. First, we have a request for Lincoln County Fire Flight Association.
Yes, there was submitted to me, um, sometime back, and I have questions for discussion.
Now, are we assuming that this would be one of the surplus buses that we-
That we will eventually, yes, declare surplus, yes.
And I, I called this route to get a statement, the bus was, you see, if you know, wanting to share with, he was aware of this request and debate, and he said this was for a fire school, which would be for the entire county, as well as from outside, you know, firefighters to come in through the train, and whatever activity that they're gonna be using this bus for, it's a fire school, is different from the activity for which they plan to use the other bus for the West Hamlin Fire Department. So, I didn't quite understand, you know, what the difference was, as he explained it to me, that I know, he said part of it was called heavy vehicle training, and that's the piece that he wanted to do with the West Hamlin Fire Department, whereas the other train would look somewhat different to the fire station.
I'm glad you explained it, Chip. So, the bus that is given to the West Hamlin Fire Department months ago will be used for some type of training activity, and this bus will be used for some other-
Right.
-activity.
That's how I explained it.
Go ahead to clarify that. Okay, anything else you have about?
We, we, we all, we have, we ought to declare some surplus buses, because if you're in there, we've had a discussion about the auctioning, and there are several, but we have declared the surplus, that they will be.
I would, I'm thinking they're, they're asking for a bus for their yearly school that they do.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. McCall. It's for their yearly fire school.
Yes, I can see that in spring.
When they had it at the high school?
Yes.
Did they have an airplane or?
That, that, that activity was for-
Is this being, they done a gentleman? Well, right, we're just, we're just discussing it now, and at some point-
I just wanted to, yeah.
-shows, that's, that guy.
I think, yes, the next meeting, that's, that's the thing.
Or the second thing, third one.
I don't know if there's any urgency, but maybe we could check with Mr. Cummings to make sure that there's adequate number of buses here.
So, I was thinking, maybe after the surplus, after-
Right, but I think that's what we're saying, that if we could get broad to, and I'll put your schedule, we as all, we're planning on identifying those buses, but he'll show us exactly which ones, which buses are surplus, and once we declare a surplus, it's the board's choice, then we could designate one of these to this group. Any other comments or concerns from members of board?
I have a request to go into executive decision on a personnel issue.
But nobody else has anything else before we do that?
MID protection program, if you made any progress on that, that's present, they gave it to the lady. If y'all, if you did what we get.
Uh, has Bernie said that?
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
The ID, you know, the lady that did the-
The identity theft program, okay. Ms. Dump, maybe, what's your name?
We will wait, Miss Andy, to, to do something with the employees, was she not going to, because there was a certain amount where she wanted to be able to take it out of the, is there a number?
I can imagine.
Total number, and the principals were gonna be contacted to let them know, or let them segment the person to come to the school.
Yeah, I have some questions to ask, although you may, I'm sad that you had a chance to see if you can pass any.
I think from conversations that a lot of us have had in form, we, we think that that program has merit, and hopefully, you'll find out more about it. that program has merit, and hopefully you'll find out more about it. I did notice that we have an ad advertisement in the paper for the other program, the transportation.
Could be a time clock.
Yeah, whatever you have, time clock, activity or, I noticed that. If anybody has anything else, and Mrs. Lucas has asked for executive session for a personnel matter, do we have a motion? Here, make some motion, Carol, seconds. Is that all yes, folks, to go to the executive session at seven fifty?